...the meeting in order. I guess I'll read the Freedom of Information Act. In accordance with South Carolina Code of Law nineteen seventy six, section thirty dash four dash eighty D, as amended, notification of the meeting and the meeting's agenda were posted at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting on the county council building, a publicly accessible place on the county website, and a copy of the agenda was provided to the local news media and all persons or organizations requesting notification. I'd like to have the, how do the pledge of allegiance? Ralph would do the one.
All right, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, thank you for this day and thank you for our time to come together and make decisions on behalf of the County. We pray for our county, our state, and our nation, and place your hand of protection upon us. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, I like that motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comment? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
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 Any who oppose, hearing none, motion is passed, the agenda is approved. Mr. Fulmer, how do we, how would you like to start this?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of council, just a quick reminder maybe in the beginning. Uh, we find yourself here at this budget workshop. You have a meeting scheduled again for Wednesday, uh, this coming Wednesday at four P M., uh, at which Ms. Burgess, the school district, will attend. So you'll get a review of the school district's budget then, and then we have, opposed to have a special council meeting for you on the thirtieth at five P M. Uh, that agenda proposes to, um, request the third reading of the budget ordinance. Uh, also, we have several other things that have come up that we'd like to put on that agenda, so we'll actually have five other agenda items for you as well. Uh, that's the schedule. Uh, the topic today is really, um, the packet information that you received. It was a synopsis of where we found ourselves after your last budget workshop with adding some additional items. Ms. Burgess is prepared to walk through those with you, so everybody is current as to where we think we are. And then, um, she has three different funding options that she's going to propose to you, and we can discuss the merits of all of those, if that suits you. Yes, okay, Ms. Burgess?
Uh, if it suits you, I'd like to, just have to run the computer, I'd like to sit here, if that'd be okay? So, uh, as I mentioned in the email that I sent out to each of you, the, uh, the report, there were three reports or three files that I sent.
Excuse me, four, just one, just one thing.
Yes, sir.
If anybody has a cell phone, please turn it off. I mean, that's, I keep, don't forget, and that was asked, sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
So the first report which we'll go over if you would like was the changes from the first reading to the second reading, uh, which resulted in, excuse me, a five hundred and eighty-eight thousand eighty-five dollar reduction in the total revenue and the expenditures. Then, after several meetings that we've had, and both Mr. Kemp's and Mr. Rouse's questions, there were some proposed changes to the second reading, which is the second report, and in that, uh, in those proposed changes, took any reductions greater than ten thousand dollars and offset them, as we had discussed previously, in a discre- in an increase in a discretionary funds line item for each of those departments that had, um, items in them. There are a couple of red highlighted items which were actually reductions that were proposed by Chief Wells. There were a couple of blue highlighted line items that were, um, which was an increase by the sheriff's office for two additional positions we had, uh, which brought, we had taken out a million, and so we were putting back in two hundred and sixty at the sheriff's request, particularly for the security in the government complex here. And then there were two, I believe, two, uh, light green highlighted items which were, which will eventually be, come back, we took them out or reduced them in the anticipation that when we come back to you in August with a budget amendment for lapsing funds, which are funds that were not spent in the fiscal year twenty-five budget, but that are planned for, uh, particular items, you know, capital type items. So we would need to bring those forward into fiscal year twenty-six. So we would ask that, um, that's what we call lapsing funds. They would be taken from the, uh, fund balance and moved forward into fiscal year twenty-six because they dropped from, they increased the fund balance at the end of fiscal year twenty-five because they weren't spent. So when we come back to you in August with, uh, a request to bring those back from the fund balance into the new fiscal year twenty-six budget. So, with all that said, I will actually get to the reports here. So the first one, um, is, is the second reading versus the first reading. And, um, at that point, that's what you have in this, in this worksheet that we sent out, I think, a couple of different times. Nothing has changed since the second reading. So whatever is in this second reading column is still in the, remains in the budget at this point. I highlighted the cash carryforward amount. Previously, in the first reading, it was two million eight hundred and five thousand, and as of the second reading, we had reduced that amount by seven hundred and sixteen thousand to two million eighty-nine. I don't know if you want to go, we've kind of talked about these periodically. I think the bit, the other biggest, one of the bigger changes that we talked about was in the firefighter salaries and rescue, uh, fire and rescue salary wages line item. There, there was a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction that was, as Chief Wells had described, as a math- mathematical error, and so that was corrected. Again, that shows up in this, what we call the second reading of your, of your budget. There were other, some other changes to that. There were the, um, the clerk of court had come, had asked for various changes. Those were made in this particular budget, so that, and as you can see there, we had removed the million dollars for the sheriff, which was for new personnel, which was basically an allowance at that point. And, so the changes, uh, as I said, resulted in about a reduction in both expenditures and revenue of five hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Then we had the discussions or we got spreadsheets with some proposed, um, changes, reductions further, also some additions. So there were, um, at, I don't remember the date of the council meeting, um, but the council requested that we include a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget line item for a forensic audit. So that has been, that will be included in, in these changes, proposed changes, as well as a deputy county administrator, which would be a third quarter higher. So those two items were increases to the budget, uh, that totaled four hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, there were several items, again, these yellow highlighted that say move to discretionary. Those were items that Mr. Kemp had proposed, some changes as we went through the budget process for various, um, reductions because maybe they all did not been spent. So, uh, we put those in this, as you can see, that fifty thousand decrease is offset by a sixty-one thousand dollar increase in the discretionary fund. Um, Mr. or Chief Wells had actually proposed a ten thousand dollar reduction for that particular department. And as we go through it, you can see that, um, in fire rescue, which is Department forty-six, there were three items that were suggested that we move to discretionary. So those three items were moved and that totals two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So they're actually net, there's no decrease to the budget. And then there was a ten thousand dollar decrease for the firefighter physicals, again, Department forty-seven, which is community risk management. Again, there was several items, a couple of line items, uh, that totaled twenty thousand. They were reduced from that line item and added to discretionary funds. Same thing with emergency telecommunications. There were additional part-time salaries, overtime, radio maintenance, coming up eight hundred contract and equipment. All of those had a reduction, um, and moved to the discretionary line item. So that, those totaled three hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Again, they net, the reductions net to discretionary. Uh, there is a reduction in the building repairs, and that is one of those items that are mentioned that would be a lapsing fund. As we approach, look at our, uh, at our capital plan, that may come back to you as a, as a request in the budget amendment, and usually we begin that process in August. And, so that may come back to you, but for now, we decreased it, anticipating that, again, it'll come back. Then we have Cherry Point Fire District, which is Department fifty-four. It offsets, the reduction offsets discretionary, there's twenty thousand there. Um, in emergency services, which is Department fifty-six, there was a ten thousand dollar reduction, again, offset by the ten thousand dollar increase. And the twenty-five, that one I'll have to correct, Mr. Kemp pointed that out to me this morning, that the twenty-five thousand and fifty are reversed. The reduction is correct, but the, the two amounts should be reversed, so going forward, I would correct that. But again, that was a, um, the, we would have, we would leave twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget. It was originally budgeted for fifty, so we would have a twenty-five thousand dollar decrease, which, because it could be, it's capital, it could be deemed capital, that may come back to you as a lapsing fund item request in August. Then we have, um, again, the, as I mentioned previously, the two hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase for two security officers at the government complex. And detention center, Department fifty-eight, had a decrease and an increase in the, um, the decrease in equipment, increase in the discretionary funds of about thirty-five thousand. And the planning department, again, that's going to be lapsing funds because we know that that, um, study is underway, and we have not been billed for all of it. So if we don't, um, if we don't get billed, if it's not completed by June thirty, then we will come back to you as a part of the, uh, budget amendment and always see if we increase that line item for the, for whatever remains of that kind of stuff. So, that actually, there were, uh, there was an increase. There was sixty-five thousand dollar increase in the four, in the, um, because it's a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase in the sheriff's new personnel, so all of that netted to sixty-five thousand dollars. And with the increase for the forensic audit in the third quarter higher, that, um, total four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, six hundred and twenty-five dollar increase, rather than a decrease. So there, we, um, came up with some options in order to fund that increase. The first one would be to increase the cash carryforward, which we currently have at two million eighty-nine thousand five hundred and forty dollars. So if we increase that, it would, uh, the cash carryforward would then be two million five hundred and sixty-six thousand one sixty-five, and the budget, total revenue, total expenditures would increase from sixty-six million three twenty-four four fifteen to sixty-six million eight oh one oh four oh. So we, we just called that option one. Um, option two is we can use, uh, sorry, we can use some, um, local option, aid tax and hosp- accommodations and hospitality tax. We have a surplus of approximately one point five million. So we could utilize some of that, four hundred and seventy-six, take that four hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars and fund it with that local accommodations, hospitality, and use it for items that are tourist, tourism related. And I have a list of those, if I want to talk about that, I'd have to call it up on this computer, but, um, such as boat landing repairs, uh, in improvements to park improvements to Sergeant Jasper Park, which is tourist, a lot of tourists come there. So there's a list of items, some marketing, could be used for marketing for the park. So, um, we could talk about that if you choose that item, where that money could, could be spent. And then, um, that would leave the cash carryforward balance as it is, at two million eight nine thousand five forty, so that the budget, again, would increase to sixty-six million eight oh one oh four oh, which is the same as option one, it's just a different way to, to fund that increase. Then we had option three, which is to, just basically, instead of taking those changes, those discretionary fund items, just do away with the discretionary fund line item and decrease the budget to seven hundred, by seven hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred, which would then could be applied to the cash carryforward, and you would decrease your cash carryforward from two million eighty-nine five forty to one million three fifty-seven oh four oh. And that would basically decrease your budget from sixty-six million three twenty-four four fifteen, which is what it is right now after, at the second reading, to sixty-five million five ninety-one nine fifty. So those are the three options that we, we suggested. And I will add that, and I hate to, there's more. You know, we have, uh, we also need to talk about appropriations at some point. What, right now, what we have in the budget is essentially, with the exception, well, like with the Fourteenth Circuit Solicitor, the council approved an increase, so that increase is in the budget. But all other agencies are at as, as they were at fiscal year twenty-five, unless the council had already approved an increase in fiscal year twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes. I'm sorry, Eric, finish.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, uh, Ms. Burgess, out of all these options, what does the administration think would be the best, most efficient way out of the options you gave us? What's the opinion of the administration?
Uh, we, I have a favorite, I don't know if it's Ms. Burgess's or not, and, uh, it would be the one in green, just cut the budget.
I agree.
That would save us from having the procurement issues of the contingency and having to come to you if we needed to, to spend out of that. Um, I think there's a lot of potential for, for error with that, and a lot of potential for, um, well, error in that, uh, the chief may need to spend money on something, and we know it has to dip into that. You know, it's not time to come to a council meeting to tell you about it, and then, you know, we just see a, a lot of problems associated with smooth rolling for that. So my recommendation would be go to number three, cut it, get your, um, cash carryforward down as low as you possibly can. You can always amend it if it doesn't work.
Is function number three inclusive of the audit and the deputy county administrator?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And one real quick question on that, is the sixty-one six twenty-five, that is inclusive of salaries, salary fringe, salary only, how is that?
Sorry, what was the number?
Sixty-one six twenty-five.
Sixty-one.
This on the top of this sheet here.
He's looking at the third.
Yeah, one percentage.
Uh, yes, that's, I'm, yes, that's inclusive of salary and then, and, you know, benefits.
So that would be a hundred and twenty-two, twenty-three, all in for annual? I don't know if we'd be able to get anybody in that capacity for that number.
I agree with you.
So, I have to make, go back in my notes, but I think it was, um, I think it was slightly higher than that, around one fifty.
Right, yeah, I believe it is around one fifty.
I'll have to go back and see what my, I don't know, I suppose I could calculate it here.
Could we have a hybrid of that? I'm sorry, could we have a hybrid?
You know what, I might have determined that being, uh, fourth quarter. So I believe that's what I did, I took it as a fir- fourth quarter rather than a third quarter.
That's what we talked about.
Hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty salary, including the benefits, which is about thirty percent. And then, um, but I believe instead of third quarter, I had that as fourth quarter. Even though I say third quarter here, I think I calculated it as one.
And I think it's going to take every bit of that time to do that.
Oh, I got a few more things I need to Christmas down.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, I do have a couple of things with appropriations. I have talked to, um, council members a little bit, going back and forth with shares and things. There are, uh, some questions on that, maybe we'll, if we can talk about it here either, we can, uh, uh, maybe talk after. Either, either is fine with me. There has been one last minute request or two last minute requests or whatever, and then we also need to look at what we're giving out with that, because again, that's taxpayer monies that are going out to, uh, these folks that are, are looking at that, and that could hog up a lot of time for conversation, but, um, but as far as that last option that you had with, can you go back down to that last option with, in the green? And I think that's the one that you all were favorable with, kind of looking at this. So essentially, we're reducing the, we would reduce the budget and, um, the cash carryforward, correct?
Yes, sir. You noted by subliminal green as go for that option.
You're talking at the library.
Well, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, Ralph, I appreciate it. I think we, several of us may have last minute items that are still floating around that we probably need to talk about. You mentioned with the appropriations, you may have a couple of different. Do you, uh, foresee staying within the same bounds of the dollar amount for last year? Or do you think you're going to need some additional funds as a placeholder?
I would like to stay within or, or less than last year, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Um, and then I think we really need to take a hard deep dive moving forward in the future with some of those appropriations to, understandably, again, that's taxpayer monies that are going out. We want to make sure that we, we do write about those monies and, um...
That makes it easy for us, though, if you're going to stay at the same amount, I appreciate that.
But as far as that goes, um, there was a twelve thousand dollar one from the, the nurse retention that either they didn't get in or they emailed late or something, I don't know if you're aware of.
Thank, yes, sir, that gentleman requests an appropriation every year, and it has not yet been funded.
And I think we kind of verbally, last year, kind of said that we would, and I think that's for nurse retention, which is a big deal that we are having with healthcare workers and not only in the county, but the low-hundred period. Um, if we can kind of move those numbers around a little bit to get that in there without increasing it, um...
We'll work with you on that. Obviously, you're going to have to cut something else, but if you can stay within the bounds of the total appropriation amount, we're happy to work with you on that.
Now, I don't know if Councilman Marzullo had any insight on some of those. I've shared, we've got the documents and it's, that's one of the hard things where I, we do know that people depend on some, some of those appropriations to, to do certain functions, and there are certain things we have obligated ourselves with, like the solicitor. But at some point, we really need to take a hard look at theirs.
We're, we're happy to sit down, as I say, go through them with you and help you, give you some guidance on some of those things. Mr. Chairman, uh, other, other loose ends for me I had, um, Ms. Burgess said she's going to walk through the fees with you. I think that's probably important, so you understand what we're proposing there. I did have a conversation with the sheriff, who said he might be here today, but he is not. Uh, he's aware of the two positions in the budget to provide campus security, uh, but he really wants two additional ones. He would love to have a complement of six to provide security for both the courthouse and this building. So I did want to relay that to you. Uh, and then you all probably received this information from the library. Um, that's kind of a unique situation. You are part of a regional library system, there are only two, I believe, still in the state, and you contribute to the regional library, which has its own funds, other funds, state funds, and other counties contributing, and those employees in the library are not county employees. Those are employees of the regional library system. So they have requested, I do still have their original request. They've requested that you please look at the salaries, uh, because, um, I believe they requested an increase, and their argument is that, uh, as you give county employees increases, they get left behind. So Ms. Burgess can review some of that with you to see.
Does that come out of the appropriations as well as how that plays out?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question.
Yes.
Um, is there any way to anticipate, um, monies that are invested through the treasury for the year?
So we do record, uh, we do try to budget for interest.
Right.
But...
Kind of tough, I would imagine.
Yeah, we do, it's sort of conservatively budgeted, depending upon, you know, what the interest rates are doing and what we can see, what we see.
Treat that like icing on the cake and, uh, right on. That's right. Very much. It's also...
I'm trying to get to the fees, good, I'm sorry, this is...
It's all right, I'll, I can fill the time here.
Talking.
Uh, one other thing that I wanted to, uh, let you know is, uh, Ms. Burgess's suggestion that you can use some of the aid tax to pull some things out of your budget. Um, the reason I don't like that is because you can get by, but then next year, you're, you're stuck again. And so, uh, we prefer that you had that one point five million available to you when you start your capital planning next month, you start that process. You'll have the bond proceeds, and you'll have that amount of money to work with as well.
Okay, I want to try. Change is over.
Well, I can, I can go, I can start, the way you're looking.
Okay.
Uh, I had requested that, uh, at Parks and Rec, we took that part in person. I like to make a full-time person.
What type of person was that? Because we had... What type of person was that, because we had it in the budget, we were talking about that, but we weren't sure.
Yeah, I know, it was gonna be, uh, uh, minimum part-time and it's.
Like a customer service or a?
Well, to help out for scheduling and all that, so it frees up another person.
Okay, we weren't sure.
And what I, and the way we, I would fund that was take it away from, uh, the Jasper Park, take the dollar now that we have for capital away.
Something in the middle?
Forty thousand, take that away.
Okay.
And if you look at the Jasper Park, what he wants to do, a lot of that is, can be done through ATAX. For example, they wanna do, redo the, uh, the deck there, that's ATAX. They want ADA, ADA tables, that's ATAX.
I'm not sure that that would, well, the tourism aspect, uh, it couldn't, yes, it couldn't.
I know, I know the, definitely the, uh, the big one, it would be the deck, redoing the deck. An ADA also is covered, if I'm mistaken about, and all I'm saying is, we need, we need to improve Parks and Rec. We just can't add, we, we go every place else and want to increase and we want to increase, want to increase. But this is something that we can help and we can start the process.
As you know, it's kind of hard to explain to people why you're spending money here, because that's unauthorized use, right?
Right.
So that's the perfect use for that, and again, we thought that that would be an ideal opportunity for you. You did your capital planning to pick something, uh, Parks and Rec to, to get that building, to have some cash. But then, we're also gonna talk to you at that time about, uh, potentially earmarking some going forward, that you could, uh, you could even borrow against it, so that you could have a perpetual payment and, and start to do some of those items that were ATAX eligible, American races.
And I think that the extra person, uh, talking to Cory and, and just listening and all that, he needs another person to get out there and talk and do things. I mean, it's just, he has, he wants the position for a temporary, it's just temporary for scheduling and all that. And I'm gonna suggest, what do you think? Go ahead.
So what does it mean with the park the record, he wants it?
He requests it.
So he wants it full-time?
He wanted part-time, so I, I would need you to go full-time first. It'd be tough to get a part-time.
Right, yeah, that's, that's the.
I, I believe there was a, uh, a river who was in that position, who was here for a short period of time and then moved to New York, I believe. So, there is a position there, I'm not sure that we, um.
This was an additional position.
An additional, okay.
At least that's the way you had it in the, in the. Mr. Lucas, what did you say, since you're in charge of it?
Uh, Mr. Kemp, I do agree that we need another person who is a journalist, uh, to go out and market Parks and Recreation programs, also help out in some business with research, uh, and so forth. So, um, our idea really is to refocus the entire, um, active recreation programming, which includes the Jasper Regional Youth Baseball Group, uh, the basketball situation, football situation, which is lacking, um, lacking. And now we have a new challenge with the soccer that we have not, um, done anything with. There are groups who are out there doing their own thing with soccer, but there is nothing that has been done with the four youth sports to have a, a consistent plan. So I do agree that, uh, we could use another person, uh, with, and a person with some specific, uh, knowledge and skills. And, uh, I think I have some ideas about how we can go about, uh, how we can go about doing that.
Tell you the truth, I think you could, even if you did it right, you could do ATAX, you could be a person for ATAX. I mean, it's a, I know you, I don't know if you like it or not, but we have to start with this Parks and Rec.
Well, I agree, I mean, that's the logical.
I've been ready for the very beginning.
Logical place to, uh, spend your ATAX funds and you happen to have surplus, so it's good news.
And I, I do agree with the Parks and Rec, but I do think we need to have a, I know we've, we've kicked the master plan around and we've done some things, but I do think we need to actually have a meeting amongst the Parks and Rec's folks and then kind of with the, the new council here, maybe in a informal kind of work session to see where we're going with it. Because we could talk it into infinity, but unless it takes off and actually does something, we're just throwing money at something that really doesn't have a, a plan. I wanna make sure that we do invest in something that's gonna take off.
Uh, Mr. Roll, to be more specific with the response to your comments, um, what we like to do is use the boat landings from a capital perspective as a way to fill in the gaps. Uh, you heard Mr. Kemp mention a part about ADA compliance. I was just out at Cook's Landing two weeks ago, and Cook's Landing is one of the many boat landings, so to speak, that are not compliant at all for the Americans with Disabilities Act, and we've had that act in place in the United States since nineteen ninety. So, uh, we talked about the, uh, grant bonds that we have, and there are two additional grants that we have interest in applying for. First, we're gonna lay out to you, as you suggested, a better plan as to how we, how we wanna go about this and which fiscal, uh, capital improvements are we actually looking to make at the, um, boat landings. And that's where all of them have some work that need to be done, uh, with them.
And I agree on that, but I think we need to have a, a focus on some youth recreation sports that are, come together that are more, I don't know, more robust for, for the area that we're working. And, and that's just something that I think that everybody could agree with, and then, we're about to crawl before we walk, obviously, but we definitely need to take a hard look at that to give, argue something to do, as well as some of the, uh, adults as well. Boat landings are one component, I use boat landings all the time, um, but that's just one component of Parks and Recreation. It needs to be more multifaceted than just boat landings.
Yes, we talked about using the boat landings as well as youth sports as bookends with our first foray into trying to fulfill the master planning effort. So we've been more than happy to put some stuff together, and as you say, have a more robust attack or approach at least to youth sports and then branch out to the, uh, adult, uh, active recreation, as well as passive recreation too.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, on that note, the Parks and Rec master plan, we'll get back into that, um, uh, because it's not just capital, as you said, it's programming. But, uh, we were very pleased with that effort because it was the people's plan, right? It was asking individuals what they wanted, and so we got a lot of, no surprise, pickleball, that kind of thing. We got a lot of, uh, input, which typically we, we haven't done. Typically, um, we work with an engineer and they say, what do you wanna do? And we say, well, we wanna, you know, fix up that ball court, we wanna do this, we wanna do that. We've had limited funding and the staff has just kind of made those calls. So this is the public telling us what they want, which is refreshing, it's not our ideas, it's theirs. And we'll have to put together a plan with you to try to help, help get us there.
The, the fee schedule, we haven't talked about the fee schedule.
Okay, keep, this, this go back to, oh, so we're agreed and we're gonna put that in, that person in there?
Yes, the full-time person, yes, sir, we're working on, uh, we're going to bring to you a resolution with all of the new positions, with the job descriptions, that, everything that you need to, for that, and I guess it'll be a, on the thirtieth.
We are trying to pull that together for the thirtieth, it will be, uh, so you will have the job descriptions to approve, try to do this the right way. And also the, um, the classification system, the value of the position, so we can add that to that.
Yes, but we were, thank, I'm glad you brought that up, because we were a little, we weren't sure which direction or what type of, um, person, what the job description should be for the person we're talking about, so, we, we have a better idea.
The problem is, is that it was my suggestion and it's just my suggestion, I had to go to the council and do it that way.
Well, that's, yes, that's why I'm bringing that resolution to you on the thirtieth, so the council can approve.
So, that's, uh, another, I have another question here. In the, uh, fifty-six, thirty-four, thirty.
Are you looking at the progress changes or are you looking at the?
I'm looking at my, my questionnaire.
Your questionnaire, okay.
Five-six, thirty-four, thirty.
Fifty-six.
And you had, I, I think what you were saying was we doubled it up. Did you, because it was, it seemed to be the same as forty-six, thirty-four, thirty. And there, so there should be a reduction in forty-six, thirty.
Yes, so we did, we did make that.
Okay, just wanna check.
Yes, sir, I, yes, sir, that reduction was, that was the, uh, the important. So we took it out of forty, took that contract out of forty-six and put it in fifty, and left it in fifty-six.
So now, going back to, you want the, or the staff wanted the green. Are you comfortable with that, is it?
It's just.
I, I mean, I, I didn't wanna, in my, my discussions, I didn't wanna, at least this time, just put you out in the middle of nowhere. I was just trying to say, okay, let's take the money, they, and put it someplace, money that's not hidden, but there, so we can control it.
Right.
And then, if they need it, we don't have to go through.
We're essentially doing the same thing, Mr. Kemp, it's just that, um, it will force us to be disciplined, to get through the year. Should we need more, we'll come back to you and you'll do it by action with budget amendment, very similar situation. Uh, just didn't like having it in different pockets with, uh, active spending. It's still there and it's still easy to make a mistake to dip into it to make these.
Well, essentially, my, one of my comments was gonna be, without looking at this, what you wanted, was that discretionary fund was gonna go, I wouldn't want to put it into, and one discretionary fund for, uh, someplace, internet, in the department or to the council in discretionary.
Yes, sir, it's essentially the same thing, we're just taking the money out of the budget and, uh, you don't have to worry about it. Uh, and if we come back to you, you will have full discretion to question why we were requesting more if that happens.
I like it that way better, because essentially, everybody stays within the parameters of their budgets. And then if there are unforeseen circumstances or anything that come throughout the year, obviously, they're gonna go to you, you're gonna come to us and we'll just have to discuss there, so, um, I do think that makes it a easier thing to do.
I think it's easier for you, uh, it's easier for me, it's gonna be a little harder for the staff, but, uh, I think we can tighten up and get through it.
Okay.
Okay, fee schedule, so, um, as a part of the budget ordinance, we haven't really discussed it, uh, at any of our meetings. I, uh, do have, uh, some changes, I don't know if you have any questions about any of these in particular. Most of these have been carried over from fiscal year twenty-five, some of them had a few increases, uh, or some changes, the airport had some changes. Um, I did want to mention that we had a meeting last week, uh, with the tax collector and some of these fees, uh, need to, um, be changed somewhat. Uh, we're going to double check on the posting of the property, right now it's thirty-five dollars, but, uh, that happens in November. We need to reach out, which we'll do, which we're doing now, reach out to the third party that posts the property and to make sure that that is the appropriate fee, because we don't, we just charge whatever that third party charges us for the posting of the property prior to the tax sale. The other change is the deed preparation fee, that will be two hundred and fifty dollars rather than a hundred and fifty. I have not had an opportunity to make these changes to this document, but I wanted to let you know. And then, um, there are some other fees, but those are basically follow state statute, so we would not include, those are not included in this. Just wanted to make sure that if you had any questions or concerns, we could address those now. And when you see the final version of this, you will see those, uh, few changes to this, so.
Could you go up to the top again for a minute?
Yes, sir. Oh, sorry, I might take forward. Yes, sir. So we have all departments with, we have a return check fee, a copy fee, which is not fifty dollars per page.
Return check fee means thirty-five dollars above, that's not, it says in addition to the bank return fees, thirty dollars, twenty-five dollars plus.
Sir. Yes, sir. Close, twelve dollars or whatever the bank charges us, yes, sir. And I do need to correct the copy fee, it is not fifty dollars per page, so we need to look at that one.
Fifty dollars per page?
Yes, sir. That's where we make all our profit. So, but, uh, certified letters are ten dollars in addition, and that's where return checks also, so it's ten dollars in addition to whatever the postage is. And then we have the various accessory, the coroner reports, those were approved a, a couple of years ago, um, and the public works.
Is the accessory, is that the actual cost? Three dollars for like eight by half by eleven? I think that's been that way for a while.
I, I think it has, sir.
I mean, it.
But I think to, I mean, I can double check with her, since we do need to make some changes with this.
I, just, co- cost-wise, I mean, I print an eight and a half by eleven myself, any kind of detail, it's three dollars personally, and they're.
So, I'll, I'll double check with, you know, we try, if you're requiring these services, then you should pay for those services rather than the taxpayer.
They, they used the big, they used the big printer, right?
You know what, I don't, I don't know, I have to ask, I'm sure, eight and a half by eleven, I don't believe.
I don't know about that one, but those would be, have to be a platter.
Yes, the bigger ones, yes. Yes, the bigger ones, yes. Yes.
What a coverage, on, on public works.
Those are, uh, like you said, the laundry drive-offs.
Not for that, but you mean it's a hundred thirteen dollars, you, you install it?
Yes.
And that's installed, a hundred thirteen dollars installed?
For foot.
For foot?
For joint.
For, for pipe?
Yes.
We don't need a check-in?
No.
Okay.
And we don't provide dirt?
Uh, dirt, we're, that's where we were selling it, out of our, um, location and we're not doing that anymore.
I think that was at Cypress Ridge Industrial Park, we had some debris that was left over from, I think, two thousand sixteen Matthews. So, we were a long while selling that, I think it's complete, complete, there's nothing left.
So, I, I, there, originally, there was a comparison with fiscal year twenty-five here, so we could just basically, you know, take those two line items out of this, uh, for this, but, uh, like, there was a comparison that publicly had a charge and this doesn't. This, this is coming from the ordinance, the second reading, so.
The deed preparation fee, we do that by ourselves, is that by the attorney?
It used to be that we hired it out, I subbed it out for a while, I've done it the last two years, just couldn't find anybody to do it. It's pretty labor intensive, uh, to do those things and I estimate that that's what you're gonna. And I've estimated that's what you're gonna end up paying a law firm to do it, because you have to, they have to be done by an attorney. That's less than what you'd get a deed done in a private, um, as a private person.
And we charge that, we charge that fee?
It's, it's, it's not paid by the county, it's paid by the bidder. We're allowed to collect actual cost of preparing the deed, selling the property.
Which goes to the fact that on, on the tax collector, in, in the tax collector, you have a, a line there for, uh, looking at deeds.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Abstracting.
Five thousand, all that. Couldn't that be done by the, uh?
Attorney General's opinion came up several years ago. Greenville County tried to use in-house paralegals to do this, unauthorized practice flaw, because the only person that can make an opinion on title is a lawyer. So, we have a service that, uh, trusted by, you know, an abstracting service that we use, that then gives the extract to the attorney, and the attorney makes the opinion as to who is the legal owner, lien holder, or whatever it is out there.
You also shed.
Again, that's, again, that's not our cost. That is the cost that you recover as part of the sale.
You also shed the liability of the surgeon.
Mr. Bob?
I would assume with these, we would definitely, needs to be looked from those that are in charge of their responsibilities, 'cause there are certain things that I may think, but for the rest, there's, would have to be such a matter of experts in those fields.
They provided this.
Oh, they provided.
They provided these fees, yes, sir.
And this is, again, something that you could certainly do off budget. We could review this anytime during the year, uh, see how we're doing. We can push that around to all department heads more frequently than annually to take a look and make suggestions.
Do, on the tax collector, there's quite a bit of work into that. Is, is, are, are all these fees covered by that? I mean, I don't wanna, the expenses that she goes through to do that, at least the way she explains it to me, is more than.
It's quite labor intensive, uh, to do these things. Where we sometimes fall short is if there's a defect in the tax sale process and we have to do it over again, which, uh, actually was almost, I, I was taught many years ago that, if, if a judge wants to find a reason to subside a tax sale, he can. And very difficult, uh, the number of heirs' properties that are involved. Uh, we've done pretty good in recent years with the number of cases that we've had affirmed, uh, that we've done the process right. But generally speaking, it's the cost of the tax bidder to pay for the cost of collection. Others are statutorily imposed as part of the bid process on the front end.
And we are going to change some of these descriptions. We're gonna take some of these dates off. The certified mailings, that is twenty dollars each. So, so that can take, I believe, is up to three certified mailings prior to the tax sale.
There is at least, is at least three.
At least three. And then the posting of the property is per property, that thirty-five dollars or, it, it may go up somewhat. We have to double check that. But that may, um, increase, but it is a per property, and that's charged to, that's something that is charged to either the delinquent taxpayer or the, or the successful bidder, so. And then advertising, um, that happens three, three weeks, and then each person is paid, has to pay ten dollars. Each delinquent property has to pay ten dollars for that.
Anything else, Mr. Bob? Maybe even?
No.
We got that. So, I guess we are going to go with green?
I like green.
Good, all right. Uh, I think that's, uh, that's a bold move, um, and, uh, I think it's the right thing to do. Ms. Burgess, again, I'm sorry to go back to this, but I, I did want you to take a look at the library again, real quickly.
Okay, the library requested two hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. And we, we left it at, um, I have it, no, I have it. And we left it at two seventy-five.
How much did they want? Again, what was the figures?
Two ninety-eight.
Two ninety-eight.
Nine, two, two hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars.
So your, your, your twenty-four thousand dollar difference?
And we left it at two seventy-four five, which is what they had last year.
Is that, the increase, is it primarily the sour limes or?
Um, I don't have their documentation with me. Can we get that, um, the appropriation from just right now, right? Yeah.
I don't normally do this, Mr. Kim, but, you know, go through the, the last minute items that pop up. I thought you should at least know that, we're getting ready to, you know, open up the library.
When did they apply for this?
They did it through the regular budget.
Through the regular process.
And.
They did it for the, first not, so they added on after?
No, sir.
No, sir. And admin, cutting, they have learned that we have cut it, and so they are requesting again of all of us, um, to relook at it. So it may be, it may be a situation where you earmark that amount of money pending more explanation, uh, of that.
Mr. Engieson? Your side?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
No questions, but not, what observations do you have, yes or no, or what do you wanna do?
With the library?
Yeah. Do you wanna add the twenty-four? Do you wanna keep it the way it is, or?
Why did they request what they requested?
So they, they requested, um, an increase of twenty-four thousand, two seventy-one. So effective, the, because of the change in the health insurance for PIBA, the, uh, library system must now manage and pay its own health insurance going through PIBA, rather than being covered under the headquarter of the county's full structure. Full-time employees, Jasper County's proportional share of the costs for regional library system employees and services also benefit Jasper. Um, so they are asking for a seventeen thousand, seven hundred, seventeen thousand, seven hundred seventy-one dollar, um, cost of living increase for their current employees circum Jasper County. So that would be, I'm just reading through this, uh, twenty-three, twenty-one, for one working adult.
Is there, the cost of living, is that on top of, you know, a three percent or five percent, whatever it is?
I don't think they have any increases in this that I can tell.
Yes, sir. They, again, they're a separate group, so they wouldn't get the across-the-board increase. And, uh, Ms. Burgess says health and that, what they did last time, because you're making appropriation to that group. But, uh, their argument is that, uh, as the county employees get lifted up, they don't, they don't get the attention. So.
Right.
I'm sorry, it's all last minute, but perhaps, uh.
What's the percentage of cost of living raised?
It doesn't say. I'd have to delve into this a little further. They don't mention it specifically in this.
And I, I wasn't aware about the healthcare issue either. If you could allow us a little time, we'll, we'll sit down with them and try to figure out.
Is that one of the things that you should go over, or gone over?
We've looked at it. It comes with some, with some numbers, but it, there is no, we, we look at different things in there. Again, we can't give just throw money out there for everybody. We have to make it fair and equitable across the board, because it is taxpayer money. But we need to make sure certain things like this is, we take into consideration of. And we do have a pretty hefty amount that does go out through appropriations, and maybe we can scale back on some others to make up a difference on this.
Mr. Jim?
Yes, sir.
Andy?
Yes, sir.
You'd made mention that there are other funding, that we're not the only, the county's not the only one that funds the library.
That's correct.
And I'd like to know if, you know, some of the other funders were being.
Pitching in as well?
Pitching in on that increase.
I think this is only for Jasper County.
It is only for Jasper County and employees that work within Jasper County. But system-wide, that's a great, again, off-budget thing for you to get a presentation about the regional system and how it works. So, that's a great workshop for you. Um, but it's with Allendale and Hampton County. We're jointly in with them. So, uh, if you just allow us to meet with the regional director and try to get some better direction for you, but in the very worst case, you're twenty-five thousand dollars off, right? So, um, that's the very worst case, right? So let us, uh, let us hold on to that and see if we can't get you an answer to that this week.
You know, and another thing, just for future, we have to look at, hopefully by the next year, we don't do this anymore. We're gonna give it to the community, uh, the local community.
Yes, sir.
Foundation and all that. So we have to look at what, what we keep and what we don't keep.
Right. I, um, and, and we'll have to go through those very carefully, because, um, that is a great system for discretionary funds. But if, you know, you want to pull those things out, the solicitor's office, and I, I would argue that the library people that you pull out too. You kinda have to look at that on an individual basis about what they're doing, and their employees. It's just a little different.
And like speaking on the solicitor's office, just for that, whenever we went into that agreement, just to kinda expedite things to keep people in and out of the county jail.
Right.
Is that showing any productivity to where it is showing return on investment by doing that? 'Cause that was a substantial amount of money that we've done, because at the time, the jail was deficient with employees and things of that, so.
Yes, sir. Uh, we, we don't notice it with the jail population, but we wouldn't know if, you know, if we're going over this solicitor, he is, I think, required to and certainly prepared to come and present to you just some results, so we can tee that up as well. Any program we've ever gotten into with you before, he's pretty data-driven. He can come back and show you what's working and what's not. So I'll make a note to see if we can invite him one of your meetings, give you an update on it.
So I guess any final, do you have any final?
I think we've covered everything I wanted to go over today, and I think we're moving forward with, I would assume between now and the thirtieth, and pending the school, what transpires between, and they have their meeting tonight, and we meet on the twenty-fifth. Is that how that is?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, Ms. Burgess has to have a budget for your consideration in a package, but today, tomorrow?
I guess today.
Yeah.
About the end of the day.
I, the school board is not gonna, I, they're meeting on the twenty-fifth. At one-thirty, they're gonna have it open, and then the twenty-fifth, they're gonna do the third reading.
Yes, they're meeting.
I don't think tonight is anything, really, on the budget. They don't have the budget prepared yet.
So we won't have their budget until, we won't have their budget until, um, that one, till Wednesday afternoon, or when they come to you. I have requested that they provide us with something, but I have not received it, so.
Well, they're.
They had planned it that way, they said.
But they will be here Wednesday?
They will be here Wednesday.
I, I already had that commitment also, but they're gonna have it on, at one-thirty at their administration building. They're gonna have a.
I think they have two meetings.
Open public.
Yes.
To look at it, and then at two-thirty, they're gonna have a meeting, a special meeting. I'm assuming that's when they're going to.
Probably the third reading.
Do the third reading. I don't know about the twenty-third, about one day. Well, today, we don't have a meeting. They don't have a meeting today, do they?
We may have gotten off track. I can't recall.
I, we've had some minute meetings.
Yeah. So I, I just know that they've given me this one-thirty, and then two-thirty, they'll have the meeting.
And they plan to be here at four?
Four, correct. And I got an email. They promised this time.
Well, uh, are you, based on the council's discussion, are you, you think you're prepared to?
So, the, the changes are accept option three. Make sure we have a full-time person in, uh, parks and rec rather than part-time. Did we, is there any discussion or decision on the additional, um, two deputies to make it four deputies for the sheriff? I don't know if that was approved.
And that was specifically for this campus?
Secure for this complex. We, there's currently two in there, in the proposed changes. And then the sheriff wanted an additional two, which is another two hundred and sixty thousand.
The issue that I have with that personally is our sheriff's department is not part from here, and if we have two people, and I know it could be different shifts, but we only work one shift here, um, just a phone call away, and to have a dedicated service of four people just seems a little, um, concerning.
Mr. Ben Geven?
I agree with that assessment.
Right.
And that is two per building? Is that kinda how that shakes down? Do we know?
I can't recall. We met with him, uh, you know, we'll, we'll invite him back to talk about this, whether it's this budget or, you know, after the budget. Uh, he has an idea about providing campus security that involves some roving personnel that would take care of the whole campus, to include the, um, where the chamber is now, all around these areas. And he also has some, some capital wishes, but, um.
And I think that, that could be a conversation that we would need to hear, this lay down in person, to kinda see where we're going, um, with that. Um, and then also, maybe he can get with our IT department, whoever does the security systems, be able to make sure that they're robust as well to, where one hand washes the other.
Yes, sir. We, uh, we potentially could talk about that in an executive session, you know, with the security features, um, but we would look forward to that.
Mr. Folter, uh, how's the administration feel about that? Do you guys feel like you need more security?
Uh, I think the employees, the general perception is that they're pleased that you have the sheriff's deputies in the building versus private security. And, uh, I think that, uh, more is always better, um, but we wanna do that judiciously and make sure we all understand exactly what his proposed program is. I'm not sure we can speak to that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Going back to what you always said, I, I would like to have sheriff come in here, because he may have a legitimate thing, but just looking at it from the outside, while it might be a good idea, we really, you know, you, you, um, you've done a lot of hard work on this, and when I was looking at those three options, the green was toughest for you in my perception, and you took it and you said, and that was a spirit of making cuts where you had to, not because you wanted to. And Mr. Wells, he went to his budget and he said, this item, this item, this item, maybe we can, uh, work together, try to cut it some, and, and that was great. And I hope that it gets contagious and that some of the other departments do the same. And, um, I think Chris has done a fine job. We've just gotta be very careful. It is a tremendous amount of a budget, and just, you know, that's my concern.
Well, if it's okay with you, I'll just relay to him that, um, he needs to come back, speak to you about it. For now, we, we will not include those two in the current budget. Is that appropriate?
Well, I think the two.
I mean, he asked for an additional two.
Yes, I'm talking about the extra two as well.
Right, so.
Also, there was add twelve thousand to the nurse retention program and twenty, potentially twenty-five to the library, but find that in some other line item.
Or find it in, maybe you can look at the.
Me, I, I, just to, to.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I might want with the parks and rec, because I think you think of a problem.
Take it from there, yes, sir.
That, that will offset itself.
Yes, sir.
But I think we can look at the overall appropriations, and we may be able to move some things around to kinda fit that in there.
Okay.
Well, we will include the, uh, library discussion, discussion with the two of you on the appropriations. Okay, see if we can figure out a plan there. Did I mess you up? Ms. Burgess, you were going down your list. Anything else?
I think that's all I have. Um, that's all the changes, I believe, that I have that I would bring back, get incorporated into the budget, and you'll have to get a copy of it today for Wednesday. It might be later in the day, but you have copies.
So, Andy, we're gonna actually send the final budget out for consideration on the twenty-fifth?
No, she just said today.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get my logistics down, getting your package to approve, perhaps an amendment.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get my logistics down and getting you a package to approve, perhaps an amendment on Monday week.
Yeah, it has to go out today or.
Yeah, without the school board, what I think what you're gonna get is you're gonna get the placeholder first reading with the option on Monday to modify the bill, which is what we're really looking at on.
What do you mean, for the school board?
Yes, sir. Yeah, because there's a lot, you know, we've got something there now. We have no reason to change it because we don't know anything, so that's what you're gonna get, subject to change at the last minute when we finally get something from the school board.
Yeah, I always, we always have that August, July.
Yes, yes, sir.
We always have July, so to me, they gotta come before, before I even think about it. And they don't seem to know what they're, they're even talking to them, and they, the budget is untenable. That's what they said, untenable. So we don't know what the lessons, don't even have to.
And that's the beauty of having an amendment pending out there to adjust in, in July and August, when things gel a little bit more.
Because I think we, we kinda set the record, uh, the way we wanna go, thanks to the staff and all that. So now we can't say to them without saying, look what we did. So, anyway. Do you want any closing comments?
Yeah, I just wanna thank the staff and everybody for working hard on this. I think we're not, we're not there yet, but we're getting close. Uh, just wanna thank the department heads and, and everybody working the building to try to do better. And I just, I appreciate it. That's all I wanna say. Thank you.
Mr. Arizola?
Same thing. Thank you.
Mr. Rob?
Uh, I would like to echo the same thing that the other gentleman has said. And then like I said, moving forward as we're getting into this, we're kinda know that the, the council, uh, as we're moving forward, wanna make sure that we are all fiscal responsible and doing things right by the taxpayer. So, um, again, as we go to our third reading, hopefully we have everything in order. And moving into next year, we kinda lay the framework, I think, to where some of our expectations would, will be. So maybe making the budget process even easier next fiscal year.
I just wanna thank the staff also. Took a lot of work, work on our part, on your part, with all these meetings and all that. Hopefully we can streamline it, lose more next year, so we don't have to do so many meetings. I think I've had, I was looking at this, we've had thirty-eight meetings so far this year. So last year we had nineteen. So you can see the, the work we're putting in, the staff's putting, because every time we meet, you meet. So, uh, I thank you very much, I appreciate it, and we'll see you on Wednesday. I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any comments? Hearing none, although if they will raise their right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.